All right, good evening, everybody. It's six oh one on November the fourteenth. Uh, this is Robert Stevenson. I'd like to call to order the suspect Colin Grandio Regional School District School Committee meeting for this evening. Um, can I get a motion to come into me?
So.
Can I get a show of hands to enter into the meeting? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Uh, can I get everybody to stand for the political allegiance? Five political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice are our own. Oh, you're great, Ty. There we go. Well, you all listen. All right. Here's our uh. Moment of speak now or forever hold your peace. We've got a consent agenda tonight. Uh, we've got some home education plans. We've got another state field trip. Uh, anybody, anybody have any issues or items that we want to pull out of that before we vote on that later? Oh, we got.
Yeah, he's in most of them.
Oh. So we got outside, outside people bringing motions ahead to make sure we pass those heads?
Yeah.
All right, that's awesome. That's all right, little, little engineering, you know, back to mom before the meeting to make sure that that gets passed. I just called it genius. Um, okay, correspondence, Superintendent Willard.
I just have a, a letter that I received from Principal Pescatelli. Um, it just says this letter serves as recognition and acknowledgement that we received a donation of this golf frisbees with an estimated value of three hundred twenty dollars. The purpose of the discs will be for an educational use by their PE department at Witten School. Um, you know, it's like an opportunity to publicly recognize and thank New England Disc Golf Center for their support and contributions. And later in the meeting, we'll be accepting their generous donation.
Yes. Protecting great things from the disc golf team in our school.
That's right.
All right. Takes us to our first public comment. And nobody here except for Mr. Pescatelli. We're gonna move on. Uh, student advisory report, Magnolia, you're up.
Long list today. So currently the class of twenty twenty five has a big fundraiser at Chipotle tonight. We have a little signup thing, like a scan that you bring there. You order your food and um, a percentage goes to our class. Um, currently winter sports have perfect happiness practices. I think tryouts during two week. Um, we had a really successful homecoming the other weekend. Everyone was really happy. I saw the pictures. It looked great. We have a pep rally on Wednesday. Um, we have a lot of fundraising with that, too. We had high teacher contest. It's going great. Um, and we're having a lot of canned food donation contests or things. That's starting off. Um, we also have a nice spirit week next week. Um, with this, of course, is in the play, um, sixteen and the seventeen and eighteen. Um. We also had a successful Coco social that the student council provided November third. Um, there's a winter sports banquet for all sports this Wednesday. We used to have that, I believe, pre-COVID. They're finally bringing it back. And then the National Honor Society has already started one toy drive. We have our second one this week. And we have a volleyball tournament on Monday. That's hopefully it.
That gets quite competitive from my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
And who's the teacher that's getting pie?
Right now, Ms. Knowles has the first spot. She's a preschool teacher, but.
The first spot.
Well, the V S is our problem. They can volunteer themselves and we all put money in jars and whoever has the most money gets pie.
So what happens if money in the other jars?
They all get collected. I think all the proceeds go to prom.
Okay, so but you should, I should make it where, you know, since everything is about inclusivity.
Oh, we should try to make them equal.
No, not equal. Equal opportunity, right? So you can get pie first and then the others can get pie second and third.
I'll have to make them the president.
They should, they, they don't want to be left out now.
Oh, of course, we don't want to leave them.
No, they, they, they want to participate. They're, did they volunteer to put their names in or they were voted in?
Yes, yes, they did. They volunteered.
So then there's a, there's a.
They want.
They wanted to. That's, that's almost a, a, an admission of acceptance. So to me, I say you've been three pies.
All for no place?
No, one gets, whoever gets, maybe it could be different kinds. Something to apples, something to berries, somebody gives.
More, yeah, more cream or something. Yeah, the bigger the pie.
And I'm sure the vice principals are gonna love that. Great. Anything else? We're all good.
That should be it.
Thank you very much. All right, our educational presentation, uh, Woodland School, Mr. Pescatelli. Come on down. And we've got a couple chairs over there, but I don't think she has a pie under right now.
Well, and he's the high school.
That's true. Well, you know, maybe you could put Mr. Pescatelli. It's like, there's like special guests, Dad. Since we missed Mr. Pescatelli.
Let's rather stay with the little one.
Shoot an email to the finest.
Make sure we could get that out on three pretty quick. Little bit of E and D money goes a long way. See, you wanted the big job. All right, you're up, Mr. Pescatelli.
Well, we're gonna begin with the, the first part of the presentation, which uh, will then uh, lead into the data part of talking about our data. Uh, if. No, of course, you've heard this uh, first part of the presentation around our strategic plan. Um, at the level of the district, you know, level from Superintendent Willard. Uh, what we at each school, right, we're going to uh, look at what we're doing at each individual site, right? And it's connected directly back to these district strategic plans, of course. Uh, if you could scroll down to. If heard these um. The other pieces that we've gone through at the district level. That we all.
You go.
It's going down.
Down, 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 down. There you are.
Right there. Uh, and so the focus, of course, is we have these, these four core areas, right? Uh, and we've agreed upon these as a district, uh, and every, really every goal and objective that we come up with as a district. Focus back to these, right? Uh, so the, the four under DEIB, um, diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Uh, you'd see ones that we're doing directly in our school. Uh, the first bullet, using the vision action plan created last year to implement actionable steps, addressing students' self. Esteem and sense of belonging. That's directly going back to, um, just highlight two, uh, actually three uh, particular items that we're doing within Woodland. One of them is more positive reinforcement PBIS kind of practices we've all heard of, Woodland cares. Uh, but it's acknowledging and recognizing kids for all the positivity that, that they bring each and every day and the good things that they do. Each, each and every day, small or large. Uh, beyond that, the second item that kind of connecting to creating that sense of belonging and creating that self-esteem for them. Uh, is recognizing them uh, with good news phone calls. Um, and that's, that's something that we've, we've been doing through this year. Uh, it's, I know something also that, uh, Ms. Carrier has, has uh, with, with Ms. Rude and, and her. Um, her staff here have engaged in that as well. And that's been nothing but positive. And uh, seeing those smiles on their faces, making a phone call at the home, acknowledging the positive things that they're doing. Um, being responsible, um, young people.
So the kids are there when we call the.
Yeah.
The kids on the call.
They make the call. It's so awesome. We love it. It's so.
Those are cute.
The second, the second item that is a focus, I know it's been a focus up at the regional school, but bringing in the K to six. Um, you know, to schools a- around this work as well, uh, working with anti-defamation. And, you know, we're, we're in those beginning stages like we were three years ago, three or four years ago at this point at the regional school. But working uh, with the ADL, uh, with our teachers and in looking at, um, you know, the, the places that we can grow. Um, as, as a, around diversity, equity, belong, right? Um. Also something that's directly connected, that this is one of the positive, one, many positives that come with working with Ms. Carrier and Ms. Rude. Um, in the Powdermill School, uh, just aligning how we're communicating out with families and, and making sure that we're, you know, always. Keeping in mind, you know, what's happening at both schools and being able to ensure that our communication, um. Is going out to everybody, translating, um, you know, so it's all languages, the, the mo- the module or the platform that we use. Ends up, uh, automatically having that ability for families to translate to whatever language it is. Yep, yep. Um, so, you know, that's. That's been a real positive, you know, the viewership of we've, I, I've noticed because you're able to see that data. That's been really positive as well. Um, and then, you know, working with teachers to provide families with, you know, the information, um, on the grade level standards. Families are getting communication from our, uh, from our grade level teams, uh, on a regular basis around what we're doing in classroom. Again. Under guaranteed and viable curriculum, uh, that, the, the four main, you know, areas, I'm not going to highlight each, each one of them. What I would like to just focus in general is the idea that we are working. Uh, together with our literacy and that specialist, our teams of teachers across the board, um, around literacy. So specifically the science of reading, we're in our third full year of that, uh, continuing to learn around. Uh, the science reading and making those, you know, those improvements, um, as, as needed. Um, and we're learning together around that, uh, which has been, you know, no- nothing short of positive, um, great. Um. The, the other item I just want to bring down, all the way down to the, the bottom, uh, is we are in those beginning stages. Of, of course, as we're aware, the evaluation selection, uh, for the, the core K to twelve, help and P, correct? So standing towards this release, uh, from the state. You know, stakeholders have the opportunity to give feedback, you know, all this, but, you know, the, the K to two level of P, are of one. Is, is the net, you know, one of the members of, of the team that will be there as well.
Are they representatives from all three schools, um, PE, health teachers and all, and everything?
Like, like Mark, Mark Arshinbo is, is our P teacher in each grade level or each school at representation.
Each school has, okay, excellent, yeah.
And again, we're in initial, we're at the initial stage, as you, as you know.
It always takes a while. Absolutely, but just.
Yeah.
The process is big.
Um, and our instructional technology, uh, we, we are fortunate to have a course. You know, a class that is in our, our specials, uh, you know. Assigned specifically for our kindergartners, first grade, second grade, so they can continue to do that learning around social responsibility. In terms of appropriate use of technology that's taught and, um, engaging in that learning at a very young age. Uh, and, you know, in kindergarten. Um, and she does an amazing job. It's very, very much engaged in, in technology and loves teaching. Uh, and then more specifically with the continuum that, uh, that platform, that's for our teachers, um. Around being able to utilize the, the data and the, um, the materials for specifically the science of reading. Right? Um, and our engaged learning, I just want to really focus on, uh, the, the second bullet. Uh, our grade levels, very fortunate to be able to work together, um, in this series of PLCs. So, uh. The teams have an assigned time each week where they are able to meet and collaborate. Specifically, um, with assigned times with me as the principal, the coaches as well. Uh, and that, that has really provided opportunity to be able to build in time to look at data. Time to be able to look at, you know, any needs that we have.
PLC is a professional learning.
Here we go, because that was.
It was, I was waiting for that.
Sorry to use an acronym.
That's okay.
Uh. Uh. But that, that has been. Definitely the first couple of months, um, in, in this, in this role as principal and. Just a welcome, um, you know, kind of all together, you know, working with me and our, and our coaches, which is really positive as well. Um. The. The last, um, item right, right at the bottom, this, this last one, you've, you've heard of. You know, the trauma-informed practices that we've been working through, uh, across all schools, uh, you know. Some of the, some of the work also, uh, along with the literacy initiative, working with Hill. Uh, this has all been work that's been ongoing the, the past few years, but. I'm going to continue to include that because that's work that we're doing specifically. Any questions related to, um, the site strategy? I'm not introducing myself. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's one vote. Bring your pie, too. No.
At least you can't send the recall.
I don't think I would. Let's send you. Got to keep a sense of things.
You do.
All right. So. The, this next part is connected directly to this, this PLC work, right? This, these data team meetings that we, that we have. Uh, I know the overall goal right now is to look at beginning of year data, okay? And, uh. Mr. Tamal knows this better than anybody. I'm with that math hat. Uh, I was a former math teacher. Love data. Enjoy looking at it, enjoy digging it. Um, but this is really a thirty thousand foot view. That's what we're gonna look at, uh, tonight. And that's what you've kind of, I think, have also seen within the other presentations. Um, but I do want to just highlight again, this is just beginning of year data. We're gonna focus on dibbles. That's our literacy assessment platform, uh, test. And then also the other is, uh. I read, yeah, so you, you're, you're familiar. All of us are familiar with both of those. Um. So. We're comparing, uh. Twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, last year, this year, beginning of year data. Uh, what you're going to see, uh, and I, I did ask, um, Ms. Mountain, just to include within the notes for you, for your reference. Uh, in the note sheets, I just prefer, because I'm using a slide to summarize, kind of like the topic. Um, but I, I wanted just to remind you, just to give clarification, okay? Uh, when we look at these colors, blue is considered above, you know, color like essentially above grade level. Um, or above that particular standard, right? Uh, green, they're on target, okay? Uh, yellow, some risk, right? Uh, and red would be considered, uh, what is labeled as at risk or intensive need. Okay, uh, what I just want to share with you is that, um. I'm gonna highlight once again that this is beginning of year data. Okay, so we're going to look at this progression through progress monitoring and then looking at our mid-year data. Uh, which are all, all built in, right, through our assessment schedule and then our end of the year data. Um, so I just want to like highlight that piece. Couple really high level, um, you know, very high level viewpoints on this, you know, piece of data. You can see that in grade, grade K, and when we look at grade one, uh, within the red, there was decreases. You can see that, uh, fifteen percent, uh, and then we have twelve percent, twelve percent decrease in terms of that beginning of year data. The, the other, um, you know, there, there was some growth in. You know, in, in minor kind of areas within that, that yellow range, but in terms of the blue and, and green, not, um. Significant change, you can see that, uh, but that's just in terms of looking at. Again, comparing this beginning of year data. And so we.
Mike, I got a quick question.
Go ahead.
So this, just looking at that first one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep.
And the twenty-three, twenty-four, those are different sets of kids, right?
Gonna grab it on there.
These are, so if I look, if I look at.
I'm gonna get to the next slide and I'm gonna look at cohort.
Okay, cuz, cuz if you look at.
The, the next slide is cohort data.
All right, cuz twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep.
Is gonna be the twenty-three, twenty-four for grade one, correct? Okay, so from that perspective, there was a massive increase.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
No, no, that's fine.
That's a good question.
Like, because they also seem very hard to just, you don't know what you're getting with the.
Well, that's it.
So might not have done a good school or.
Also, different, different tests are designed differently. Am I correct that the dibbles shows like the goal for the entire year?
Yes.
So that like, we're not, we are not expecting our beginning of the year data to look real good in the beginning of the year.
Is that higher than that?
Yeah, I think it's I ready that does the opposite. I ready is like, faces it with them, right?
I thought dibbles are too, okay, nevermind.
Um, so then also, and I'm gonna get to it, um, right towards the end of this slide.
We're jumping.
No, it's okay. It's a good question. It's really great question. But we will see, I'm also just saying now, we will see that. Going down the grade two. There was this increase, right, in red. And our second grade team knows this. Our, uh, literacy specialist, what Markowitz knows is, Katie Sullivan I, I've worked with around this. Superintendent Willard knows this, right? We, we've all worked through this and digging into, uh, the, the reasoning why. We're able to look at the sub-test and how the sub-test, because a composite score is broken up into, I'm gonna. Mess up the number of tests that is, it's in your six to eight in that range, but each test has a different weight. So where they are at in second grade, uh, there is a. This growth in terms of, or increase, I should say, not growth, but this increase in the at-risk, you know, student population. Um, just because of that weighting that's, that's changed.
So that's an interesting setup though, because if you look at your twenty-two, twenty-three grade one to your twenty-three, twenty-four grade two.
Yep.
Which is the same group, right? You're only one percentage out between your green and the blue combined.
Sure.
But your blue is better than your green this year than it was last year. But then on the other side of the coin, you almost got a story of, like, two stories with these kids. The upper ones get a little better, but the ones that were struggling did worse.
Well, who knows how far, maybe they just missed the yellow by a point.
Yep, and it all ends up having to do with, this is the, the final kind of piece of this. Uh, that we have identified with grade level, with our reading intervention, this sort of literacy interventions. Uh, our literacy specialists, you know, Ms. Markowitz, we've looked at all of these students that are identified at risk. And we're getting them the support immediately, uh, wi- within these first couple of months, setting that up with our. Not just our tier one in the classroom intervention, but then also tier two, tier three, so with our reading interventions.
Was last.
This sets the time.
Yes.
For my own personal, I have a kid in high grade.
Yeah.
He does not meet need for anything, but he's kind of in that yellow, because it's time and his teacher was like, he would have done great if he could just had a couple more minutes.
Yeah.
He just has a small.
When, when did we start this thing to read, to last year, two years?
Three, three, yeah, so this is our third, third year. So that's the other part. That's weird, right? Because you would, you would hope that kindergarteners had got it and they went to first grade and then they got to begin with the second grade that those numbers.
Well, except that, like, it doesn't really trickle down to the kids right away. Like, in the first couple of years of the teachers, the teachers that are really getting most of the training.
Yeah, the fir- the first year was weird.
Yeah.
Beginning stages of learning.
Right, so last year was really the first year that the kids were exposed to it and, and there were some learning hiccups along the way. Um, so you really need like three years of implementation with students before, like, you really ever in the first.
Okay, I mean, I guess, looking at the K to grade one, though, there seems to be a pretty good jump. So are they, I mean, maybe that's why second grade didn't jump so much, but now we're in the groove?
The teachers are, it's a starting place.
It, it is, it, it's a start, it is a starting.
That's all it is. It's a starting place.
But, you know, it, it's worthy to at least.
Share, this will be neat to look at this next year.
I, I would even, I would even say I'd be interested to look at the end of the year.
Yeah.
You know, I, that's.
Particularly those key standards you guys are drilling down on.
For sure.
Now, do we do the same dibbles in three, four, it was, goes, we still say.
It's a different test.
He's gonna go to the next.
Oh, yeah.
Go to two slides ahead.
Yeah, right.
But.
Yeah, well, if the first grade doesn't.
Because those would be the ones, you'd be interested to follow these guys along and see how they do.
That's, no, it's okay.
Their training was doing this.
So, are already what Chairman Stevenson was referring to, uh, looking at the cohort, you know, data. Uh, of course, with grade K, there is not gonna be cohort data. Um, but looking at twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, compared to twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, there was, you know, that decrease in red, like you already identified, uh, pretty significantly, right? Um, and that increase in, in green, that, that occurred. Um, and if you lumped together, uh, even our green and our blue in grade one, there was together an increase. Uh, you know, pretty significantly, uh, just again, beginning of your data. Okay, uh, grade two. You, you, you already identified it, you saw it with, uh, Chairman Stevenson, but there, there is that, uh, increase in, in red. Uh, just looking at just cohort alone. Um, but again, looking at that, like I've already said, uh, we are addressing it, we're. We dug right into that, you know, who those individual students are, they're just not a number. We're, we're looking at the actual kid and how, um, where they scored in certain sub-tests and how those were impacted and where they need specific support. So Jen, these are just for the boys, right?
Yeah, no, the next slide's gonna come, no.
Maybe the ladder.
All right, so here's this here, the staircase, this is going back to your question. What are the, the variety of, uh, steps or stairs that we take in this, uh. This whole progression of how to read, right, the learning of reading. Uh, and it begins with all the way down to the basics of letter sounds. Uh, learning to blend our consonant, vowel consonant, so like cat, right? So we bring those together and bring it all the way up to fluency and looking at nonsense words, words that are not even words. And having them being fluent in that and accurate, um, within that. Automaticity means it, it's just automatically come, right, that, that flow is there as they get it.
So how far do you, does?
Good question.
Good question.
So. The notes, right? Uh, that overall K to two would, and again, this is a continuum of back and forth that can happen that way as the learning occurs, right? Uh, but it overall would be getting with kindergarten down at letter sound and phonemic awareness. All the way up to fluency, automaticity, even touching, it can, at, at times fluency, prosody, comprehension. And I've been told it can even go beyond that, uh, within second grade, not, for, for second grade. So in that flow of second, kindergarten, the second grade. I've asked to break it down in terms of which, which ones would be kindergarten? And it depends. It, it's not, it depends on the child. That's exactly it. But, uh, overall, if you feel to give you all a range of where we are in kindergarten to second grade, that, that's the overall general.
But say you are in third grade and the overall skill you should be working on is fluency, accuracy and fluency, automaticity. Because that's where majority of the kids are in developmental. But we still may have kids who are lending CVC or decoding beyond CVC. So those are the kids that get pulled out for their small group based on their, and they're in the red, that is their instructional group. They'll get pulled out and that's what the, the teacher will focus on specifically, so they don't get left behind. And that's what the the teacher will focus on specifically, so they don't get left behind anymore. We know specifically what it is that the kids are struggling with in the red. And that's what we focus our small group instruction, it's not a guess anymore.
Right.
We know. Right.
Cool. See that email you sent me earlier about when to ask the question, perfect.
Do we know how many kids in preschool prior on average? Like, how many students are in our preschool that end up matriculating in our school system?
Forty-five.
Any preschool.
They ask them the paperwork when they're in this school, but I don't know.
So any, any child that's in our kindergarten, you're saying, you're asking how many children are actually in preschool? That's an interesting question, I don't have that.
It's about forty-five right now, but it grows over the course of the year because.
Oh, no, he's asking like so the kindergarten class.
Oh, no.
And in general.
Hey, did they, did they have time to see school before kindergarten?
It's, it's, it's a good question, fine, and that's something that.
Which I wouldn't say filled out that paperwork back in June, I would say they asked you and you attended it.
I I know, Julia, I remember going through that process and yeah, she luckily had preschool and I think it helped tremendously.
Well, let me, let me just, I'll find out.
I I'm just wondering how, I mean, yes, it's.
It would be an interesting piece of data to find out that you can see year over year, how, what percentage of the kindergarteners actually went to preschool prior to.
Preschool, but. Assuming.
Taking care of.
Three-year-old.
You would think that might, like you may find one year that they're all in red, case you seventy percent of them are in kindergarten, then you go to preschool.
Yes. It's pre-K handbags.
I I will see if I can.
Yeah, I'm just.
But it is, okay, so they're.
And see what kind of impact that has on what we're doing.
What Superintendent Willard thought, uh, the number that we currently have is around forty-five, we're, we're always getting some more students just through age changes.
Yeah, it's open and low.
Exactly, but that's.
We don't have everybody.
Where we're at right now, you know, the number.
Special, so preschool in district is a special education program. So students, our preschool is a special ed program.
It's open.
And it's so over the course of the year, you go from birth to three, you're part of WITS. And then at three, you're eligible for our special ed, so they do a transition. So once children become three, if they have an IEP.
Yeah.
They can start here no matter what time of the year that they turn three.
Okay.
Peers, uh we can only have so many peers in the classroom because it has to be a balance, I think it's like eight to seven or.
Yeah, you're right, there's usually, I have a three IEPs and then so it's the opposite with the peers.
With the peers, so you can't fill a whole classroom with all students with an IEP, you have to balance it out between peers and students on an IEP.
Which we have to follow all the way to high school anyway, right, cuz that was the reason that we had discontinued a lot of the classes.
Yeah, so we, and we're seeing in preschool, as we said at our last meeting, heavy, heavy, heavy needs are coming in um throughout the course of. The next few months, so. So Jen, I have a question for you, I I know that you said like, um, we ha- kind of have a rolling enrollment for the special education kids that are coming in. What about for the peer models? Do we only accept X number of peer models in September?
Well, usually it's only spot to show.
Usually a goal. It usually fills up with students, there's usually a waiting list. Uh-huh.
There are that, like, I know one of my kids, my friend's kids just started out this year, I put, I took, I can avoid this, cuz I'm. So, if peers let open, great, I have it, if not, then it will go open.
And it's like afternoons, it appears, cuz kids nap so.
Right.
Well, right, yeah.
Right, and am I correct that when the peer models, parent or the peer students, their parents pay for it? But it's not for the IP, the district pays for it?
Right, that's correct, they would provide transportation for an IEP.
Yeah, but we don't provide transportation for the peer models.
Correct, correct.
And it's half, it's either morning or afternoon.
Yes.
Afternoon actually pays less than the happy.
Um, next slide, thank you. Uh, so then changing gears, looking at I ready data, this is a real uh probably even more so uh. Not even thirty thousand foot view, more of a forty thou- uh forty or fifty thousand foot view, uh look at this data, looking at whole school just to begin with. Uh, and I am assured by uh not just the teams of teachers that I've worked with around the I ready map, but also. Uh, our coach, uh our math specialist, um that that I've looked at this data with as well. Again, it's beginning of your data, what we're gonna see, uh. You know, it it's a a minimal uh, you know, increasing green, but we should at least mention it, right, going from nine to thirteen for beginning of your data. Uh, as a whole school, um, but kindergarteners, the way they're assessed, they're grouped in here. Uh, as a norm, they're going to be in yellow or red, that's just what it's going to be, so we're talking um. Across the board, all of those students will go into that group, you'll see it in the next, the next slide, uh where. Uh, when I, when I shift slides, uh, but just to recognize that, I just would like to acknowledge it. Wi- within this uh, this data piece, you will see, when I come back at the end of the year, new presentation for end of the year's data. We will see dramatic uh changes, you you'll compare this slide to the, the end of the year data and and the, you know, that data presentation.
It would definitely be normal though, cuz at the beginning of the year, there are, there are, you're by, cuz they just started.
There will be, I know. I agree, I agree with you, yeah, but it.
Cuz if you went to the beginning of the year data and the green was all the way over the red, these kids need to skip grade, right?
So I, yes, I agree. Sure, um, it it's just a- at least worthwhile to mention though, um, you know, for the beginning of your data where we're at.
So, here's the question then, so if it's the beginning of your data, how do we have kids that are above grade level at the beginning of the year? Like, cuz the above grade level would be, I'm assuming, what they need to accomplish in that grade. How is somebody above a grade level already at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, it it it's not necessarily going to be that way, they're looking at all kids, it, yeah, all skills that are needed within that grade level. And it it's not necessarily. At at this point saying that they're uh not needing the grade level instruction in all the standards that are being taught. It's, it's looking at across.
Yeah, no, but it's averaging, they're saying that they're.
Well, we have kids who come in above grade levels, reading and math every year, yeah.
Some of the time, like, I'm sure the right day kids, some above grade level in certain aspects of the math they're supposed to be doing this year, but other ones, they might be in the yellow for.
Yeah, but this is again, a com- a really, it's a composite score, so there's definitely, uh, they're they're strong master, it's no doubt.
Yeah.
Uh, they have that map, they 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 probably engage in that, they enjoy it, they're good at it, whatever.
And no, those kids just get, they just keep them going on.
And they differentiate for them, they, the our classroom teachers are aware of it and just like we would differentiate for a student that's in the yellow or red, provide those supports. Doing the same thing for.
Well, I mean, you got a pretty sweet bell curve going on right there, I'm just saying, I mean, if you look at your percentage at the top, if you look at the bottom, that's. It's perfect bell curve right there, so it's pretty no, typical.
It's a scientist. Thank you. Alright, next one, thank you. Um, so looking at uh cohort, uh, you know, data. You you can see that, um, you know, a- a- again, worthy to note is there's. Being in your data for each year, it, we've seen a trend of an increase, which is, which is positive, that's good for being in your data, but, um. Overall, pretty, pretty consistent, like, there's not uh significant uh changes and I just. We we see down in uh the bottom portion, when we compare in the red, um, you know, from twenty-two to twenty-three. This, to this, that's grade two, um, you know, you you can see there, there's an increase there and. When you're looking up at the uh, the grade above, same thing, there is that increase for red. We're aware of those children. We're working with the grade level teams and grade level teachers, um, as well as our our interventions.
Can I just ask a question? So, I look at this, would I say that that top bar, that group of kids, where ninety-two percent were in yellow, is the same? Group that is now the bottom bar?
No, next one down, I think, right?
This, this.
That would be first grade.
This is first, first. And this is, this is second, so.
Oh, that's them in second, oh, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it, I was confused, okay. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm like, whoa, okay.
So, again, you've got Tale of Two Cities where the kids that are doing well, there, there was more of them now at the beginning of the year, but yet. On the other end of it, now we've got more kids that are two grades below or one grade below, whatever, like.
And and that's, and that's something that, we've been able to dig into that and that data, it's looking at that with, with that story telling us. And that's the work that we've been doing the first couple of months, like looking actually into the subscores. To find out what, what are the reasons behind the overall, general composite general scores that we're seeing.
Kindergarten can't be two grades below.
Correct, that's, that's.
They don't have them.
They could, I.
Said the same, minus two, two, the red.
The coaches, I said the same.
Okay, alright.
Um, so, but, yeah, but looking, looking at next steps, um. It highlights right back to our strategic plan, right, uh, steps that we're taking. Wi- within the science of, science of reading specifically, uh. As we've already heard. Huge focus within literacy, right, so we are uh working through a series of professional learning, uh. With literacy labs, uh where help comes in, we're creating lessons together, our teachers are going in. With, you know, each grade and going into classrooms in live time, um, doing, doing that instruction. And then, you know, being able to learn from each other, be able to, you know, improve our practice. So we're doing, you know, that professional learning, it's happening, um, e- every single day, but uh really in a consistent way every single month. Uh, we have an ongoing schedule that, you know, at ea- at each grade level team, we're, we're working together around. Um, and then, you know, beyond that, uh, we have the coach, our coaches, uh, working. You know, directly with, with math, working directly with literacy, uh, we have. You know, scheduled data meetings that we're continuing to, uh, yeah. Look at progress monitoring for both literacy and math and be able to work together, um, as a team to really continue to make the improvements that we need to make. That was, so, uh, I know that, you know, we're looking at numbers, but I truly believe that it's it's not just. You know, thirty thousand foot or fifty thousand foot, literally each individual kid. Um, I feel strongly about that, knows that, um, that each, each one of these kids matter, um, and. That's how our teachers feel as well, and that's, that's what we'll do, we'll get them what they need. And we'll continue to make sure that we have a, a very high level, um, you know, level curriculum for our children. And the level of instruction is right there with it. And I I look forward to coming back at the end of the year.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
It's always more exciting to be there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Very well done.
Thank you, everybody.
That would be nice.
Is there? I I forget where on the agenda I have to, um, present.
Nope.
I don't have to present that, oh, okay.
For the donation?
Yeah, the donation. Okay, okay.
You can, you can, you can be, you, you, you refuse, okay, alright.
You submit it, you have to be ready.
Awesome.
I don't think we're gonna have any questions on the frisbee disc golf, so we're good.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, you all have a great evening.
Thank you, buddy.
I agree, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
If it does change.
I'll go pie. See, that's.
So volunteering, it comes.
Sounds like here. We got a ex- you need an extra, you guys, can you get an extra bowl, like or an extra thing to put money in?
Bring in one of my own.
There you go. Mr. Pescatelli's now volunteered to be part of the donation, that's awesome. They could livestream it, they could livestream it to Woodland. Yeah, I don't remember, so what? Well, maybe, maybe you could do the actual.
Pie.
The pie impact of the face down at Woodland. So that the kids down in Woodland could see it.
I feel like they did, you guys can start throwing it.
Give it a pie. Alright.
Why stop at Woodland?
You guys could make like a g- billion dollars out of this. Alright, let's see, who do we got, uh? Individuals with Disabilities Act.
Yeah, so I'm presenting on behalf of Mrs. Gunn, our special ed director, so IDA is uh, is a federal grant that we get. Uh, annually, um, and we get a substantial amount of that and use for, for salaries and especially at department on some other services. Um, they offered an IDEA Part B this year, which was looking at the implementation of, of uh new forms and processes and how to. To uh implement the IEP process, IEPs, Individualized Education Plan for, for our students. Um, SDG RSD has been awarded fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for the school year to train our staff on the implementation. Of, of the fo- of the process using the new forms, uh. Given the, uh, we have a lot of new specialized teachers, uh, I know Mike, you just hired one, the shorter has two new ones this year as well. Uh, so I highly recommend that, that we, um. Support and accept this is fourteen thousand dollars for the implementation of the, of the grant. IEPs, as you know, are a legal binding document for our, our students with special needs, so having. Uh, the staff trained and aware on the new processes and the forms is extremely important for. The education of the kids, the awareness of the families and for the protection of the district really, so, um. I know Mrs. Gunn will do a, a good job of overseeing this, making sure it's implemented, um, for our staff and our students.
So I just wanted to kind of pipe in a little bit on this because as you guys know, I attended the, the mass conference. Um, and one of the sessions that I went to was actually on the new IEP process. And it was kind of brought to us, um, in terms of like not only what's changing, but what kind of implementations does that have with regard to, um, policy? Um, and fund, um, and the one, one, the big thing that I wanted to take back to you guys was there's a grant available, right? So, but like my big takeaway from that conference was that like, you know, Southwood is doing everything that we need to do, like we are dotting all of our i's and crossing all of our t's. Joe is a perfect example of that, like, right, so here's the grant. Um, but one of the things that I realized as part of implementing the new IEP process is as with any new change, um. So it's, it's initially going to take more time, right, it's gonna take more time, um, for teachers to learn the paperwork, but then complete the paperwork. And then the actual IEP meetings themselves initially are going to take more time. So we need to be planning for that with regard to release time when a meeting is happening. Um, and that was one of those things that was kind of funding, coming under like the funding, um, and the financial implication implications. Also, um, there is a component of the, the new changes. That, um, will put more technology in students' hands, which again, might also come with a little bit of a price tag. So those were the things that they just kind of mentioned to us that like, hey, be on the lookout for this, this is gonna cost you guys a little bit more money. Um, in terms, especially in terms of time first, um, and you know, some of the, they, they highlighted that funds are available. So, thank you for jumping right on that.
So just fourteen thousand to pay for the people to come in to train staff, or is it?
For some of it will be, uh, uh, resources to come in and train our staff, some of it will be paying our staff to go get trained as well, some of it will be.
So they'll be doing this app, like?
Yeah, apps rules, yeah, yeah.
Cuz I'm trying to figure out, what are you gonna do all this?
Some of it will be, some of it might be.
CTEC meeting too, right?
Yeah, some of it might be, um. Paying for professional, professional development or or sending teachers or sending specialized teachers to do some trainings during the school day.
Okay.
But it could be meetings after school, professional development after school as well.
That's true.
But given, given, I mean, anyone needs it, we have, uh, three or four new specialized teachers that I think off the top of my head that, that would really benefit from. Um, this professional development as well.
Hey, it's fourteen thousand, we don't have to pay for the budget, so, yeah, good job, very good job, anybody have any questions on this? Alright, fantastic, uh, policies will be quick, um, we just had policy subcommittee before this meeting. Uh, we're in the middle of G, so we've got you guys with second G and H. That was, um, included in your packet. That was um included in your packet just as a, hey, we're looking at this, this is your technical first reading. Um, once we get through these, we're hopefully, and I asked this today, but where are some of the. Chapters that we've already done, like A through. F, where are they? Should such can get back to us. Um, cause what the process should be happening is they're going to be typing these all up, getting them all corrected, like what we want to do. Then we'll bring them chapter by chapter to the committee to take a look at. So that would be second reading in a meeting, and then when it's the next meeting, we would be voting on accepting the policies. And then as we go through those, we'll end up transitioning at some point to where our policies will be. All electronic sort of housed through MASC, like a number of the districts are. So it's coming. We're getting. Are we both happy through? Yeah. J is.
J and I and D. Does it go to Z? No, that's a good question.
Double Q.
Does it end on K?
It'll end when our book is all done. Aaron, Aaron keeps adding more chapters to it, so we're.
Well, I mean, G is like G point one, two, seven, nine.
No, 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 it's not that tall, it's like you're in Missouri. I don't know if you've ever been to Missouri, but all the state highways are all letters. Everything's all in P P highway, Q R highway, it's crazy. So the the policies, I think, were all created in Missouri.
Aren't they all numbers?
No.
Like all even numbers go across and all odd numbers go up and down or something.
All their state highways are all letters. Try giving people directions. No, P P highway, R highway, I mean, it's crazy. Um, alright, so anybody have any questions on the policy? Okay. Sugar and butter.
Move to approve consent agenda items as listed above recommended.
Anybody got any or no questions on this? Can I get a show of hands except the consent agenda? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwood Regional School Site Strategic Plan for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year recommended.
Got any questions on this? Show of hands approved motion. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the donation of disc golf frisbees to Woodland School from New England Disc Golf Center with a total approximate value of three hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you and recommend.
Any questions? I get a show of hands except the. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the Individuals with Disabilities Act IDEA Part B Federal Targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant. Within expenditures and outlined in the terms of the grant recommended.
Any questions on this? Reach out again. Where's?
Yeah, Robin, Robin's on top of the stuff with you.
Oh, related, at some point in time, I feel like um. When this gets underway and then training has started, Robin should meet with the um special and subcommittee. And just kind of give us an update in terms of like, hey, this is this is where we're at, this is how, you know, we're allocating those funds, this is the um training we attended, blah blah blah.
Move to approve two.
Hang on, hang on, we gotta get a get a vote on it first. Quick, air on the trigger. Can I get a show of hands for proof? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero, now you can leave.
Move to approve two school choice seats in grade one for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year recommended.
Anybody have any questions?
Are more already in our district?
We did a quarterly.
Yeah. That was a pretty good idea that we came up with last year, but doing, so it. Just a quick question on this, so the one applicant for third grade, since we have four seats open, they're just gonna go in one seat, right? Anybody got any question? Show of hands approved motion. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Budget roundtable.
Yes, so next Wednesday, we, not next Wednesday, sorry, the Wednesday after that, December sixth, I believe, Saturday.
Two, three weeks from now. Yeah, Thanksgiving is early this year.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so we're gonna be doing the budget roundtable, um, and it's going to be focused on a lot of the vocational special education. Foundation enrollment, um, I'm doing a little research right now on, um, and I don't want to go too into detail about it. Cause literally I'm in like the infancy stages, but at the uh conference that we went to. We were at a regional uh breakout session and I spent about three hours at at it. Um, and I just add, I started asking some really in-depth questions about out-of-district vocational tuitions. Because it's really impacted our budget tremendously, and I was given some interesting information. So I'm I'm doing a deeper dive into that and I'm working with our attorney on a regional agreement. On statutes, statutes um that regional uh. School districts have in regard to vocational um out-of-district tuition and transportation. Um, and I should have more information at our next school committee meeting, um, but like literally. Like Rob was in there ten minutes before our policy and I got the email from our attorney. So, um, I don't even want to go into any details because I don't want, you know, rumors to get out there, but um. Just that, um. We may have.
You're trying to identify who's responsible for paying for those for for the costs of the of those kids going out of district, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah. Um, and what time did we set that budget roundtable meeting for on December sixth? By thirty, by thirty, okay, thank you. Usually it's in the library.
Yeah, well, here on site, but either in the cafeteria, we did cafeteria, I think, last year.
Library.
Oh, you do library?
Budget.
Okay. Mr. Turmout, got any fun, exciting, uh?
Yeah.
Find a hundred thousand dollars somewhere?
Not quite, like a couple of good updates, um. We have our first uh bid on the thank you call. So we've sent out a a couple of requests for a bid to call, so we received our first one today, so we're moving. Along with with that, um, all, we ordered twenty big sensors. Eighteen for the regional school, two for down here, uh, the vendor put all twenty in at the regional school. Um, so we put one in each locker room, he put both, he put two in each locker room, which is okay. They'll be utilized, but they are up and running and being utilized. We are wired down here for it, so we will order two more big sensors for the six-year bathroom down here, that project. As far as the regional school is done and complete and is is working and being utilized.
And are they calibrated correctly now? I believe the last time that I asked, we were having calibration issues.
Yep, yep, they've they've uh the assistant principals have been working with uh the vendor and. I think everyone is running officer standards as his account as well, so he's able to support when necessary. Um. We had our finance subcommittee a couple of weeks ago last month, where food service was the the topic of conversation. Um, and I was left there with a couple of questions that I wanted to follow up on, um. So food service is in a U A uh new situation where we are running in a surplus. Um, for those group meeting members that have been out here for a number of years, it wasn't that long ago, probably just before COVID where. I think it was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that we were. Uh, bailing out food service for uh right before the pandemic, and we are now in a place where we're operating. In a surplus for the last couple of years. Uh, because of this, we have the opportunity to to spend that money and, um. We finished last year in a surplus of a hundred and four thousand dollars for FY twenty three. Um, and so some questions on on what we could do with this money, when we could spend it, how we could spend it. Um, what I learned is our fiscal year runs from July to June. Food service fiscal year runs from. May to June, and the reason being is that June. Ending late June, school ending late June, you do your numbers, you submit those numbers, you don't get your reimbursements until late August, early September. And then by that time, school districts are really trying to do do their end of the year reports and submit their end of the year reports. So we really look at our our end of the month uh receipts from from May to June. So I think the number I gave you guys was like a hundred and seven, it's actually a hundred and four.
We've got more, but it's a hun- but we've got a hundred thousand extra than we thought we did, right?
Yes, yes.
Like we thought we'd spend it all.
Yes.
No.
So.
We didn't spend it all.
A couple of questions, Mr. Fox, you specifically want me to research. Three, we can carry three months of of profits that we then need to spend it on. Food service related items. Um. We do have leeway with that type, if we have a plan, if we're developing a plan, if we're working with a company looking into making some services. But it's not like three months around, what are you doing with this money or you lose it. But you're ten, you're you're looking for around three months of of your um revenue that that you need to spend. Um, there is a person at at the DOE that is in charge of. Of uh Mr. Fox and and Chairman Stevens had an idea of of a purchase that. We we discussed, we thought about, and and really it's like, well, who at the end gets to make the decision of whether or not this is okay? This falls under the purview of whether we can spend it or not, and his name is Peter McLaughlin of the Department of Ed. Who I reached out to about uh the food service of our u- the truck and purchasing a truck. And if we're using it for dust food service, we could do that. Um, if we're using it for anything else, we could not. Uh, but Peter McLaughlin is his name, and he is the guy that if we have any questions about our purchases. Uh, and I can send you his his email feed beep, but.
Just one thing you said, we can hold back. Three months of revenues safely, the excess is what we have to spend, correct? Above and beyond, like the three months worth of stuff, we could keep that in reserve.
Yes.
But the excess is what we're spending, not the three months, right? So we've still got, we've bought. Last year, a number of items to help.
Yep.
The food options at the high school, we thought we had utilized all of that extra money. And then when Joe and I met last week, we've got, ah, got a hundred thousand more.
We have about, we we have about a hundred forty thousand dollars right now that we we. Need to have a plan to spend, and and to Matt, Little Bridge's credit, he's been working with. Uh, with some different vendors, I don't think, and that, we have a plan to uh furnish the regional schools cafeteria with about. Seventy-five thousand dollars worth of new tables and chairs, um. High tables, high chairs to to make it look more of a college campus. Cafeteria look to it, uh, we're looking.
In plates, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, add some 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 plates as opposed to trays, we're looking at. Uh, we're working with a contractor right now to paint the cafeteria at Woodland and at the regional school as well. Um, that we utilize some of that money. We have a program up at the regional school right now, a nutrition wellness program, where there's about nine thousand dollars that's budgeted for. Food and supplies, we're thinking of, we're working with Mr. Littlebridge on on now ordering the food and supplies through him. So he can, he can, um, support that program as well. Probably more than the nine thousand dollars that's allocated for that program, um, right now as well, and so. Um, and milk, milk, believe it or not, is. Milk carton, believe it or not, and this is just something, and you know. I'll 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 save you the conversation with Mr. Littlebridge around this this stuff, but uh the state of New York. Actually had a milk cartons shortage, I think about two weeks ago, uh, for schools. And so what he's looking into is um like the bags of milk in the in the chest that you can. Pour yourself a cup of milk as instead of getting a carton. There's a lot of benefits to to it environmentally and and economically physically as well, so. Uh, where that is, that's something we're going to try uh up at the regional school first.
Fill things.
Yeah.
Is more.
Yeah.
And then they like throw things.
Well, they need somebody to pour the milk.
Yeah.
Little kids just need a cup with a lid.
Yeah, so that that's something right now.
We buy some cups with lids that we can wash and stuff, we can do.
Yeah.
Just saying that.
We, I don't think they're gonna cost that much, but we've got some extra funds available.
Yeah.
So this is not really related, but kind of related, another thing that came up when we were at the conference was. Um, the utilization of uh our local farmers.
Yeah.
Being able to provide um for our students some of of the foods that are are grown locally. Um, and Jen mentioned that uh an issue that we've had in the past was being able to pay them. Um, so I'm not exactly sure what the problem is with regard to being able to pay them, you know. Um, I think she mentioned that like they don't accept POs, and then another superintendent was like, well, do they even know what a PO? Is and how it works, because maybe they just say they don't accept it because they don't know how it works. So, I I, anyway, just worth looking into again.
We will, and that and that is doing a, Matt's working hard at at trying to implement that as well, so. But you are right, one of the, one of the the hangups, and I'm not completely familiar with it, but. Uh, local farmers delivering their goods and then being able to pay them right then and there is is what they're delivering. Um, how we do that, how we document that is something that is, has been a challenge in the past, is from my understanding, but.
I wonder if we could allocate a portion of those excess funds that we have to like almost a payment schedule, because. You know, I mean, anytime that a a delivery like that's gonna be, it's extremely seasonal. So like, you know what month you're getting peaches, you know what month you're getting blueberries and apples, you know, like. Right, well, that we can have, that we can have any month that we want.
Back to the whole milk issue.
But yes, that's that's, we will look into that.
Okay.
Um, but I think that's what we're looking towards, follow up, Mr. Fox, uh. The how long we can hold these funds, the amount we need to spend right now, and a and a plan for that, um, so.
And how creative.
And how creative we can be.
We can be.
Yep, yeah, so.
There's some gray areas.
For sure, for sure. So that's the plan that we have for for this three-month swing and and uh. Uh. The good news is, is I'll be back in a few months with kind of a second phase of this, because Matt is. Doing a good job, so, um, no, he he just sent us an email, uh, two days ago, where he did his October. Numbers from this year compared to last year, and it's fifteen thousand dollars more this month of October in twenty twenty three compared to October in twenty twenty two, so.
Telling you.
Salad bar, tons.
Salad bar.
Salad bars.
Big hit. Yeah, um, one thing I do want to make you aware of that, um, I. Self-reporting is that we put forth uh a request for a proposal of RFP for our technology project. Um, I have to take three steps to do this because of the amount that the project was going to cost us. You just paid it going to be over a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, this is what the capital request was for uh for FY twenty three. Um, I needed to publish it in the in the paper once. Uh, post it on uh a state goods and services and post it on combines where businesses have the opportunity to skip. Uh, did all that, and we were going to review the bids, um. And what I did not have in the advertisement in the proposal was that. The proposal of how you were going to do the project and the monetary bid needed to be in two separate sealed envelopes.
Hi.
Because you are supposed to evaluate the the proposal based on the proposal first. Not on, not on how much it's going to cost. So in in the proposal, we put the criteria, we put the scope of the work. We put the criteria of what what your proposal is going to be uh rated on. And we put the scale in the proposal, so everybody knows, every vendor, every company knows exactly what's. The criteria is and how you're going to be evaluated. That needs to be done by a committee of two, three, four people. I am in is collect those evaluations and then we can open up the sealed money bids and and look at that. Now, the reason I did the proposal is that we don't have to go with the lowest bid, that we can look at the best. Proposal, um, the hope is is that they are close to, or the best proposal that we have is also the cheapest one. But if not, we could go with with the other person, the other vendor. Uh, so I I was in contact with the uh Attorney General because I thought that. Because we had only had two proposals that can I just go with those two companies and move forward with the process and. Uh, the response I got was I would be, uh, was the wording I used. Subject to to a protest from the company that did did not get, that was not awarded. Subject to to a protest from the company that did did not get, that was not ordered. So today I put that all out again, it was advertised, it was posted to the two places, it needs to be done for two weeks. So Monday, December fifth is, is that fifth or?
Fourth.
Is the two weeks, or I did a little bit further because I need it starts on Monday. And then Tuesday we will open and evaluate them, um it puts us in a little bit of a crunch with the timeline, but Garland is aware. Um and and we'll be on topic.
So we're starting over from scratch technically, just to make sure that we follow the right eyes and.
It's gonna be the same two companies that.
It probably will, I mean, I, what was affirming in in doing this the first time is. Rear four companies reached out to us for the proposal, we were able to send it to them. They maybe were, we we put in that they need to be working with Ford tonight, Aruba is the competitor for tonight, so one company is like, well. We work with them, so we want to be um bidding on this, fine. Uh we got a uh interest from a a company out of Baltimore, a company out in the Midwest, so. It was affirming to know that we we did it, we did it right. Um but what would happen if we went through this, through with this in in a company. Uh protested it, then whatever work was done and we paid for. Um they could, they they could come in and say, rip it all out and we don't have to start up, so. So this was the safest uh smartest.
So the AG said we did it this way, we'd be okay?
Yes, so I reposted everything with the appropriate language in there of that the the. Proposal needs to be sealed and the bid needs to be sealed in a separate envelope.
So and that we need a bid.
And that we.
Everybody's gotta submit a bid.
Yes, okay, yes, so uh so that puts us two weeks behind, that is, that is not me, um.
Two weeks?
But.
Really on you.
It's what we need to do.
Rather do it this way than go forward and then get burned.
The safest thing for physically safest to do. All right, perfect. Um that's what I got. All I got.
Subcommittees, negotiations, we had one this week, right?
Started, we had, we met on. Um. Care professionals and custodians, we had our initial, and then we had our initial meeting. Um with the clerical, so we're gonna need executive session before the next school committee.
Awesome, finance, we've got another meeting this week, right?
Another meeting, uh Jen's gonna talk about round table and um athletics is going to be the next. Area that I think we'll we'll look into, we've done brands, we've done foods, we could look at some athletic. That's my hope is once a month, we kind of look at one.
Yep.
Topic and probably December, January, it'll be a little dominated by the budget.
And would you bring the to date expenditure that you gave about in the story?
Help feedback.
Uh yep, um I went last month and I have another one tomorrow. Uh nothing crazy, um they're having major issues still with shortages on dry birds and. Long Meadow has the runt of that, they have like two buses that are like forty five minutes late and greasy. Not only arriving to school, but then leaving school, so then they have to actually pay teachers a stay later. To cover that forty five minutes with all of those kids, yeah. And unfortunately, what they keep doing, yeah, and what they keep doing is they keep hiring all of these people and training them. To uh with for their C D L and then they. And so they're trying to look into how they can legally, you know.
Have any clawback.
Nothing, because it it seems like they should be able to like put something in a contract or something, um. Yeah, and they're trying to um hire like mothers who that, you know, can put their kids on the bus, but the insurance companies won't. Um cover kids.
Their children in case.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's true, no one can't go.
But it's a huge issue now and like still all of the mechanics, all of the, you know, um. Monitors, whomever, they're all driving bus, so. There's not just a lack of, you know, bus drivers, but now it's monitors and mechanics and. You know, they're trying to pay all of these people, all of the, you know, supervisors. Um who are actually driving bus, they're trying to give them some sort of stipend, but you know, it's a nightmare.
I see on advertising.
Yeah, and then they did a presentation from a new woman that they hired to do equity and inclusion and. Um she has a great website.
I've got a meeting on Wednesday too, but unfortunately I couldn't be able to make it, but they're bringing in the authors. Who will look.
That's tomorrow.
They're checking, make sure there's gonna be enough on the server.
From Boston.
Huh?
From Boston.
Yeah. Policy, we just had a meeting tonight. A couple new policies with respect to electronic equipment lights and um. Again, classrooms and then we'll.
Um how to give an access supplies.
Right. We have supplies that uh are. No longer being used or things that we need to, you know, we just can't dump them as a landfill, we have to go through proper policies and. Issues like that, so we're trying to get a policy set up for that, so we can easily, more easily get rid of. Stuff either donate it or sell it or whatever we need to do, so. Working on that, um building grounds, we gotta have a meeting coming up soon, right, with their.
Tomorrow.
What time's he coming in?
Twelve thirty.
About three?
Yeah.
When in?
Tomorrow, twelve thirty.
Finance on Thursday. It was coming up. Probably in my phone, um let's see, I L T.
Yep, we had a uh a meeting last week, I was only able to attend the first half hour of it, so. So yeah, so it we went back to being in person at the SRS library, they're longer meetings now, they're like real true like working workshop meetings. Um and the idea is that each month we take a different um component of the strategic plan and kind of focus on this, so. This month was um guaranteed viable curriculum. Um and we were looking specifically um at literacy and what some of the literacy instruction looks like at each of the three grade levels. So moving forward, I L T will be, um you know. Uh teachers and administrators presenting from all three grade levels, kind of with that like vertical alignment um vision in mind. Um so I got to see a fabulous presentation um of a woodland teacher teaching us. Um phonics and blending and like it was participation and it was awesome, it was lots of country, did an amazing, amazing job, so. Yep, yep, and then um you can take over for the rest, that's where I had to be.
Yeah, so then we had Mrs. Carden who's a fifth grade E L A teacher, we did um another. Representation, I guess, of a class that she would teach. Um and I think it was Mike's question that it was interesting of how both had a similar structure. So K through six, all their E L A classes have the same structure, and so I want to say it was Mrs. Markowitz who said then. Like, once the kids learn this structure and their brains can be like, okay, like I know what you expect and what. It's expected of me, then they can actually learn more and comprehend more and it stays in their brain. Um and I'm I'm not gonna remember the person from the high school, because I know the other two teachers. Came, um and so the high school's looking at two different curriculums to go with for E L A. Um and I was unfortunately on Zoom, because I was in a car, but they got um two different. Standards, they got eight, the groups got eighth grade standard and tenth grade standard and um. They had to kind of look at both standards, answer some questions about it, and then they talked if they got the uh curriculum, the. A lesson for each curriculum and kind of put their standard into that lesson to kind of see which one that standard fit each better. The standards being um looking at text central idea and analyzing how that idea was developed. Through the text and but also supporting ideas, then the other one was um. Determining an author's point of view and then how they like develop that point of view on purpose of the textbook, not. Um, oh, I think it was. Mentioned it's interesting to see how in the younger grades, we're learning, we're teaching them how to read, right? But then in the older grades, it's what they're learning from reading, like we're teaching them and now they're almost like teaching themselves.
And totally supports the importance of the signs of reading in a very sound base in literacy. Because as you move up into secondary education, you know, you need to be able to read, to be able to.
It's like the comprehension, right, the comprehension and then that extensive, the. More comprehensive learning, critical thinking aspect to of like what can I learn from this, how can I dissect it?
The top of the staircase.
Exactly, I'm like, where is the like staircase in? Yeah.
All right, wellness. You go to wellness tip?
Yeah, I sampled the uh. They were excellent. And very uh.
Very good.
Well, things that you should, that's the, that's that's the meal you should have.
That was the, that was the meeting?
No.
No.
They just get fed? Fed. Okay, technology. Okay, capital committee, master plan, master plan, we're good.
Capital committee, Mr. Fox.
Yeah.
Okay. Athletics, I just had one yesterday, uh we went over end of year um. Reviews overall, the um soccer teams did very well, the boys are still doing a rebuilding year, the girls did fantastic. They actually won for the first time since they went to the new structure, we actually won first round game. Uh went to the second round and ended up having to play the second ranked team in the in the state that was. Back to back state champions in division five for the previous years, uh but they actually, they. They got beat, but they uh they played well and uh Chris Wiley did a fantastic job this year. Coaching them, volleyball did great, I mean, we had, it's a really good results, um we're getting ready for winter. Um we've got like uh we were said earlier, we've got our banquet, or not the banquet, but sort of the end of year or the end of um. The fall, sort of uh they're gonna give out the plaques, we looked at actually some new options going forward. Um where instead of giving out sort of individual plaques, or we're looking at sort of certificates for everybody, but then having a. Plaque with the names or the thing set up on in the school where MVPs, stuff like that would actually. Instead of just getting a plaque you go home with, you get the certificate, but then the plaque is showing at the school where this year, here's the MVP for soccer, here's the MVP for baseball. So um that's, I think a win-win because from a financial perspective, it's a, it is. I don't know how much these plaques cost us, but there's, there's a significant. In the range of eight to nine thousand dollars over ten years that you're looking at saving when you go to the plaques on the walls with the names. Which, you know what, when you bring your kids back to the school and put in years and say, hey, that's the year that I won the B P or whatever. It's a great idea.
Boxing up in my basement right now, so.
I mean, look, I've got. Like, it's a good plaques that they got and they're sitting in a box somewhere.
Yep, so here I have a question for you, so this awards night that we're reinstating.
Yep.
Um is this intended to replace the individual team banquet?
I don't, I I what they're looking to do is to make sure that every sport. That sort of, it's an inclusionary setup where they're gonna have this end of season. Sort of get together that everybody's gonna go to the plaque, the the certificates, the acknowledgements will be done. We're gonna have a little uh thing in the gym where everybody's gonna start out, uh Mr. George is gonna say something. Jasek is gonna say something, um they're going to actually acknowledge the seniors. Um then they're going to sort of split off into different areas. Um where the teams will then give out their their individual warrants, and then they're gonna bring them all back together and I think the. Feature auxiliary lunchroom or something that's supposed by, and they're gonna have. For cookies, some stuff like that, sort of like a little small little food offering. Um then you're still gonna have soccer's event, is this Friday night, somebody else. I I don't think we're gonna ever get away from those.
Okay.
Cause I think a lot of the teams have got that. It's instilled from a historical perspective and the teams and the parents and the kids. People like to get dressed up and they like to go to Shaker Farms or wherever they have it, um. But it's like, huh, that's what? Oh, you weren't there? Oh, you'll be there Friday night?
No.
Oh.
That would be just.
I was to work there, so I'm like, I don't think so, no.
So this year's um schedule enough not to be inclusive because.
I, okay, so the tra, the, I heard about a conflict with track?
No, cross country.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, well, it was last minute sort of meeting that had to happen. So we, and actually, we brought that up yesterday about, well, what?
How do we know about that, simply in advance, right, like there's no way?
We've set the date, well, the 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 conflict was last minute on the sports side. We had set the date weeks before and I even asked the question, we we push it to next week. Well, now you're running into Thanksgiving, you're running into other things that are already set up, cause a lot of the teams. A lot of the teams have set themselves up, right, so it's, but. We like, we wanna make sure like the golf team. What's wrong with team, they may not go up to have their own event, well, we need to have something that everybody's able to be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I fully support it, just I was wondering about the crash, not behind it all.
And the um registration for winter sports technically ended last Friday. Uh but they've opened it up till after Thanksgiving weekend to make sure that everybody's good that beginning. Um so that's gonna go up. But yeah. And then legislatively, then we just. You just went, wanna give a seven?
Yes. So it, it it was awesome, it was, it was really genuinely awesome, I attended a whole bunch of different sessions. Some of them Jen and I together, some of whom we kind of set, um you know, separated and did different ones. Um I'm not gonna go through my whole litany of notes here, um but um. So I I think some of the ones that I found um most interesting and and potentially valuable. Um was there was a really fabulous one um about um. Communities divided, you know, and and like how we as a school committee deal with the polarizing issues um that are pervasive in society and that. You know, it hit the schools and hit school committees, um and it was a phenomenal, phenomenal presentation. I think that at a later time, what I'd like to do is take some of those slides and kind of consents them into like a clip notes version. Um and kind of bring them to you guys, um because I really think that some of that was, it was just really interesting discussions, suggestions, great ideas. Around um public comment, around social media, around um in two-way street. Um engagement with with families and building trust, um just just really good stuff. Um so I definitely want to share that with you guys when we have more time and attention. Um and then I think another one that Jen and I both attended that was phenomenal um was um A I in education. I mean, it was a professor from M I T that I think we just both sat there going, I wish all of our professors had always been like this, I mean. He was just amazing, he was funny, he was brilliant, um but so like a true educator at heart and so on point. Um basically told us um how A I works. Um and and what it does, what it doesn't do, and its implications in education and how we should be viewing it as educators. I think it really just kind of um like verified um our own gut reactions of and and what what's already happening here. Particularly with the work of um the regional school teachers in in their smart goals, um it was just, it was just awesome, I'm I'm really glad. I went, I got a lot out of it, um and I think Jen would probably say the same, yes.
Did you stay on site?
I did not. And I'm glad I did not.
See?
A lot of people did it here, I think it was all renovated.
Oh, that idea.
Cause it's all renovated, I go, didn't you just tell me you lost heat last night?
She goes, oh yeah, I forgot, I'm bad, I'm like, okay, that's not renovated.
No, thank you.
Very good, great, second public comment. I think we're fast, there's nobody here, um all right, uh let's see, old business. Parking spot procedure.
Yeah.
Talking about that.
You or me, are we bringing them back every, I just wanted clarification. Them back in June, or can we just make take an action item that it's?
I wanna, I wanna put a policy.
A policy?
Yep.
Policy or procedure?
No, I wanna put a policy as to what we're doing, why we're doing it, I don't want anybody down the road to run into the. Misunderstanding, different understanding of what we approve. I think we all agreed last year and we agreed this year that those kids are going to be able to express some. That those kids are going to be able to express themselves onto that parking spot. They're gonna have their designs approved by the vice principal and that's what's gonna happen, and I think the safest way to make sure that that doesn't get. Rooted the wrong direction is we have a policy that says this is what they're gonna do and this is what they can follow. I think this is what, I think this is what we should look at.
That's where I'm trying to figure out like where it doesn't really fall under policy.
Could go under student activities or something like that, there's gotta be somewhere we can put it.
Are you gonna email this with that question?
I will.
Alright.
I will, I am, I wanna.
I completely agree with you that we should have a procedure in place for sure, an agreed upon procedure. I just don't know whether it should live in procedure or policy.
I don't think it should live in an area where it can get, if it's procedure, it can get changed without our approval.
Right now, they can't paint without your.
I understand, but it, look, the only way this got shut down is that it got pulled back here to school committee. If we didn't do and we didn't find out when we did, we would have had an entire grade that would have hardly done anything at those parking spots. Cause they were limited with certain colors that was incomplete. Objection or difference from what we originally approved that to be, I don't think it was meant. In in any bad manner, but it was going down the road, that that is not what we approved, and and if it's po- if it's procedure. It could get adjusted.
Unless we were to stay in it, any changes to this um procedure must be approved by the school committee, yeah.
Fine with that too, but i- as long as there's some sort of. Well, so to be out in there that says that it doesn't get switched without our approval.
Well, it can't, because my procedure was going to be one um at the June first, June school committee meeting. That's when they come in and they present it to you for your approvals, that they can set it up over, so it's not something that we have to worry about in the office, it's already.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you, but I don't even think we need to do that. And we could have a vote at a meeting at some point that says we're approving this new procedure and this is what they're going to do every year.
And that would.
If I just want, however it is set up, I don't want anybody. Misunderstanding or looking at this down the road on their own going, you know, we don't wanna do it this way, we're gonna do it differently this way.
If you take an action item and it's in the minutes and it can't be changed unless this, cause. You have to give permission for this.
Right, we can get permission, we can do it in an ac- in an action item, say, look, we're giving permission going forward, that they don't need to come back annually, that's a waste of time. Cause they can, we can just approve it.
Okay.
Now, if that gets approved and it goes into a procedure that won't get adjusted without coming back to the school committee. Then I think we'll be fine with that.
Then we can say in the action item, so we'll write up what the procedure is and you say as written or as.
I'll talk to this, I'll talk to this and find out.
Okay.
Does it, is anybody else only?
I just wanna make sure I'm doing it right, I don't wanna make sure that it's messed up for next year, that's why. Okay, and I wanna do it down while it's still fresh in my head and not once we get to budget season.
Now, when it comes to fundraising though, this isn't on there, but we may as well, talking about coming in ahead of time. I think it would be a smart idea for any teams that are gonna be participating in the fall. That wanna have any sort of fundraising activities, they ought to be coming in a season early. And putting in those requests that we ha- we don't have to run into the eleventh hour. For the eleven fifty nine that we ran into here a couple of weeks ago, that we gotta get approvals for fundraising.
All great if we have, coach knows that they're going to be the coach, that's.
There's your problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause they're not, you're not gonna know.
All the time.
Right.
You're not.
No.
So then.
Individual teams do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then with respect to those, they're gonna need to get those into us as soon as possible. And if there is a way that we can be. Use the word leaning, but I guess on our end, as long, I mean, I, if it goes out. Let's say it goes out that Aaron sends it out in the packet on a Thursday and we get somebody that comes in on a Friday, or God forbid even a Monday. And there's something last minute, I'm certainly not opposed to us adding that to an agenda. So that we don't run into a delay where they can't get that approved for two to three more weeks down the road.
You know what, that's what'd be a question for us too, not every uh school committee approves fundraisers, usually it's the building principal. And then if it's like something, whatever, it goes to like the superintendent, but.
Well, that could be a solution.
Let's talk to Russ about the legalities and whether school committee needs to even sign off on, cause if they don't, it is a whole lot easier.
I think that's a great idea, if you're gonna talk to Russ, let's find out, we take that off our plate.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we did, we were voting on Singleton contracts that we didn't need a vote on before too, so.
Dylan, can I have some fun?
No, I mean.
Yeah, it, but don't be gentle.
That would be great, um. If we could at the beginning, um either beginning of. January-ish, I think it would be great to have Ms. Schurr come back and give us an update on our yonder bags.
Okay.
Um, I do know that we've had some, some questions in the community about. All of these things, um people do have concerns, my suggestion is to reach out to the principal. Um from a committee perspective, I do know that we've approved the purchase or the use of the funds that we got that were. Part of a grant, so this money didn't cost us, or the purchase of these yonder bags didn't cost the district a dime. Um and we are, right now, we have only approved the usage of these for seventh and eighth grade. Um, does that mean that we may or may not use them for the grades above, who knows, it depends completely on. From my understanding, the behavior and the activity of the children that are in the grades, as to whether they can be responsible for their electronic devices.
And I think another important point is to recognize that anytime a procedure is um implemented. Um, you know, it's gonna take a few weeks before everybody's in the group or they're in the routine um and. Give them time.
Yeah, it's already, I.
And also, there's nothing to say you can't tweak some.
Right.
You can always change something, it's a learning curve.
Yeah, I just, I I just know that there's been a lot of questions going around last week out around town, so I thought we just may as well address them here. People go back and look at this and that would be fantastic, um.
Yeah, and some of the parents know just simple things, like in the event of emergency, these kids can rip them open, you know, and that's just a piece of. You know, information that they didn't have, except.
Can, they can take care of that.
And I can get into details, but um we've had a lot of issues this year around um cellphone, a lot of our. Student behaviors and a lot of the discipline and the bullying have all centered around cellphone usage. So um and there's things that the community isn't aware of and they don't know about, nor are we going to share the details of it.
Right.
But um that's where some trust has to come in, that know, that people know that we're doing what's in the best interest of children and their children includes.
Yeah.
Provide the best and the safest education possible.
Alright, did we get anything else for old business, anything for new business? Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aaron, let the record show, motion passes six zero zero, good night, everybody, thank you for your time.